Mrs. Bennett. And she's a professional speaker, so it wasn't like I couldn't change her name, so I'm gonna just add some on there.
Yep.
You're in class.
We're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Woodfinn Planning Board of Adjustment regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is November 7th, 2023. First, we are going to take role. Mr. Hanson. Here. Ms. Gosnell.
Here.
Mr. Deroni.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins. Absent. Ms. Overbeck.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Hayes, present. All right. With that being said, I would like to ask everybody that's in the room to please turn your cell phone volumes off, so we don't have any interference with the meeting tonight. And... Look, we... Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. Everybody in favor? Aye. So moved. We do not have a copy of the minutes for October. We'll do that next month, so we're gonna skip letter C. So that'll take us to letter D, public comment. Marie, do we have anybody signed up for public comment tonight?
No, we do not.
Ricky? I'm sorry. Okay. So that is good with public comment. So then, we don't have any unfinished business. We will move on to F, new business. Legislative public hearing. Tonight, we have a request to conditionally rezone 10.2 acres located at 24 and 41 Crystal Country Way from residential 21, R21, to R10, conditional zone, R10 CZ. The property is identified in the Buncombe County tax record as PIN number 9731-26-8526 and 9731-36-1694. The property owners are Montreal Properties. Did I pronounce that correctly? Montreal Properties of WNC LLC and 2D Investment Holdings LLC. And the project contact is Ariel Rayner?
Rayner.
Rayner. Okay, I apologize.
Thank you.
On behalf of the property owners. Ricky.
Thank you, Chair, for that. So, up on your screen, you have what is the current zoning map, the two parcels identified. So just way of orientation, you see the light green is the R21, which also includes this property. The orange is the R10 to the north and west. And immediately across Old Marshall Highway, you see like a light blue, a little bit of yellow stuck in there. That is the Springs at North Asheville. It's a pretty good-sized townhome development that's under construction right now. You probably noticed that more than anything along that roadway. And then, the other R21 is just another single-family neighborhood. So, just in general, you're just looking at a lot of like residential, single-family-type zoning in this area, with the exception of the townhouses. So here's an aerial photo from earlier this year. So like we said, we're lucky to get like a January 23 aerial photo. Again, you see all the parcel lines across the road. That's the townhome development. The blue boxes are our subject site tonight. And you can see that there's like a scattering of homes just around, everywhere around this property. There is a small stream in that lower left-hand corner of the tract. You see a pond just to the west of it off-site. I know that snow makes it look weird, but there's some snow on the ground that's why it's white.
Ricky, if this project was to go through tonight, will that be incorporated into one property lot when it's all done, or it'll still be two separate?
Well, they'll be filing a plat, so they'll basically be... Do a whole new subdivision plat.
Oh, my God.
So it won't look like this at all. You'll see the plat here next.
Thank you.
So here's kind of the subdivision plan with a few comments. So again, you can see Walnut Springs Drive on the right-hand side is the entrance to the townhome development. You see the new road comes in off Old Marshall Highway, kind of halfway between roads, and kind of does like a curly Q, almost like a question mark, into the south. The downhill most portions back that creek we talked about is the lower left-hand side, so they're creating a couple big lots. That's lots 16 and 17. They're the bigger two lots, I believe. I'm not an engineer, but I think it has to do more with the fall of the land away from the sewer system, and just how much you can pressurize to get it uphill. Just as a note, as you'll see in the right... In the blue, what that says is the area of a 20-foot sidewalk easement. We also requested they agree to street trees in this area, as well as what I call a negative access easement to prevent those four houses from ever having individual driveways directly off Old Marshall Highway, so that you don't have multiple stops. Everybody will turn in on the new road alignment. The other modifications here, the bottom center, you see the required lot width of R10 is 70 feet. This lot's about 64 feet. It's kind of a technicality, but just to put it on there, it's almost a flaglot shape, but just to make flexibility where they put the house, just add that as a modification. The other note says the full length of the proposed street's approximately 1,225 feet in length. The engineer, she can correct me on that length if... I'm just giving a quick estimate. But that's kind of a good idea of maybe like, if we were to do street trees, is one thing I mentioned, that we had asked about street trees down the entire length of the road, as well as sidewalk construction along Old Marshall Highway. That would be about 450 feet of sidewalk along Old Marshall Highway for the full width, minus the road itself. And then, the street trees would be about every 40 feet or so along that 1,200-foot alignment. But again, they did agree to street trees along Old Marshall Highway itself, which is about 11 street trees that would go in.
And are the street trees on the question mark-shaped road?
No. That's the one that they did not. We asked about that, and they declined when... My request to add street trees on the new road. And it also declined constructing a sidewalk along Old Marshall Highway.
What's the question mark road's name?
That hasn't been set yet. It's just... You can call it Road A today. They'll have to work through Buncombe County addressing to basically get a road name that's not duplicated in this county. And that's rather a big feat. You wouldn't believe it, but it's pretty hard. So...
One other question on the...
Yes, sir.
Next to the cul-de-sac at the end there, that width that you're talking about.
What's that?
That width that you said is 60 feet instead of 70?
Yes, about that. I just measured. That's an approximate estimate. It's about 64, 65 feet wide.
Of the lot that... Is it like the flagpole?
Yeah, the flagpole, yeah.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah. We allow flaglots, and they're typically 20 feet wide. This one, you know, but we also allow lots to be 50 feet wide. But it's just, this is R10 requires 70. So it's more of a strict letter-of-the-law technicality. You know, if it was R7, we wouldn't be discussing it. So just to keep it from becoming an issue, or forcing something weirdly back, we just put the modification in just as a technicality, not really a big issue with...
Is it technically a separate variance, or this is just gonna be...
It's just be a modification as part of the R10 CZ.
Okay.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be a separate variance. If it were to be a standard subdivision in R10, and they brought us a preliminary plat, they would have to ask for a variance. You couldn't approve the preliminary plat, but with the CZ, you can. The two hatched or grade areas up there are open space or common elements, I would say. And that's to facilitate the stormwater devices for the project. So they'll have to meet the town's stormwater. That's where the devices are going. They'll need a stormwater permit. Of course, they've not designed that yet because they've not got approval, and they'll work through all that. But Ms... But Ariel, you want my go by first names? Okay, Ariel? Yeah, Ariel. I mean, Ariel's talked quite a lot here lately. She's provided some information in the package. You look at the subdivision plan, you can see where they've calculated the impervious, future impervious area and for the devices on that. I just didn't put it on the slide, but I can bring it up if you want to look at it. But they'll be required to meet stormwater standards for us. And I just throw in the utility plan, just so you can see that they are doing sewer. They're bringing it... They're connecting back to the east side of Old Marshall, back to the system that's in Walnut Springs development. So they somehow figured out to get it some gravity down this new Road A, and then back under Marshall Highway. And Ariel, you can correct me too, but I think you're doing some low pressure off of the lots on the back side. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct. So, like lots 16, 17, and then 11 through 15, you see on the back half of the development. That's what those easements are, the little gray strips that run between lots, is to facilitate sewer connection back to the gravity line. So, I'm not an engineer, but just pointing that out. Water line is City of Asheville Water coming off Old Marshall Highway, feeding the entire development. So they will have public water. And the other thing of interest is there's the creek in the lower bottom back there. They're not grading or getting into a stream buffer, or bothering the stream in any nature as far as this plan. So it looks like the stream will remain intact as far as that, if you're of interest. Then, getting here, here's a typical elevation they provided. Just to let you know, they're proposing detached, single-family for all 17 lots.
So, they... This is shown as this is a typical house.
This is typical, yeah.
But...
It's not binding.
I think I read that they're selling the lots to private builders.
That's what I understood, yes.
Are we going to be able to maintain any similarity in these houses? I mean...
It's kind of hard, because the state really precludes us from actually, you know, mandating design standards for single-family, two-family housing. If you fall under the residential building code, you cannot mandate, mandate, you know, any type of like transparency, or the way the house, you know, is laid out internally. You can't restrict the colors and materials, like vinyl or brick.
So in theory, we could have 17 different houses.
You could have 17 different houses, which is not necessarily bad. You know, people like the variety, but we could have 17 that look exactly the same. So I did get a chance to get on this site, a little bit easier to see. Nice weather day. So you're looking kind of southeast along Old Marshall Highway. You can tell that we're kind of on that low ridge, right here, as Old Marshall runs across it, going back to Weaverville Road. That, in the left of center, is the for-sale real estate sign for Walnut Springs. So you can see there's some houses to the immediate east. This is kind of looking west into the site, so I'm kind of, again, on top of the hill, looking down over the hill. You know, this is kind of looking back into some residential neighborhoods, but you really don't see the houses, even with the majority of the leaf drop already occurred. It's fairly flat, like one of the flattest sites I've been on since I've been here. There was a former manufactured housing park there, but it's been gone for a couple years, I believe. Again, looking back south, a little bit further back in the site, you can kind of see the crown of the property is pretty close to Marshall Highway.
Ricky, you did mention it was a former site. So are there existing utilities on-site?
Most of what I've seen was like septic tanks, but I think they're all defunct. But no, I think, you know, water's in the street.
Well, I guess my question is, are they required to remove all that stuff, or they could just abandon it in place and...
Well, if it's wells, if there were wells there, they would have to cap those per, you know, environmental health, state guidelines. Septic tanks, same thing. If they're digging those up, they'll have to handle that waste, or pump it, or crush and fill them. There's different ways of dealing with those systems.
Okay.
And they've done some site analysis. If you look further in the packet, they located all the septic fields and the grades of the property, you know, pretty tightly, so you can see that in the detailed board packet. But you wouldn't have to worry in this case, since everybody's getting public water. So if somebody was using a well, they don't have to worry about it now, because they're gonna have public water. Again, Old Marshall Highway, a little bit further north here, that is the entrance to Mountain Glen Road. So this is the other road. You see, again, it's a pretty level site. And then finally, looking back to the northwest along Old Marshall Highway, they were actually proposing more of a house lot down at this end. You see, it's a variety of just single-family home sites all the way down through here, scattered. Some are older developments, or just kind of organically developed over time. And so, just as a overall use of LED fixtures, just, we probably throw that in there because most people are going with LED now. Duke's about went to that. Our lighting code, again, hasn't quite caught up with modern technology. It still has like sodium or halogen lights in it, so just to kind of cover, so they have flexible... Flexibility in getting the right lighting, energy efficiency. We're just saying that they do dark sky compliant light fixtures on the streetlights. And again, the modification to the lot width for Lot 10. And so, that's the only other modifications they are requesting for the lots. Every other lot meets the lot area, they meet the lot widths. Didn't see anything else as far as the subdivision in general that wouldn't comply with our subdivision standards.
Since they're privately-owned street...
Correct.
Streetlights and paving and curb that's all...
They would construct it...
Their responsibility to afford?
Yeah. Yeah. And since they'll have a POA already for the stormwater device, that'll be easy for the development team to just kind of roll in any streetlights or pavement maintenance, road maintenance agreement. So that'll kind of take care of that, one together. So, do you have any other questions I can go through? I mean, again, like, I've got down a recommendation or approval, but you know, there is a little bit, you know, in talking to town manager, there was a little bit of concern about, you know, sidewalks along Old Marshall Highway, and then the discussion of street trees within the development. And, you know, me and myself and Ariel have talked a couple times about that. We've had several emails back and forth about requirements. And so, we've had real good conversations about it, been cordial, been good conversations. But, that said, I'll kind of be quiet for a minute, and I can let the development team speak. They can answer other questions you might have about the private roads, or if it's for-sale lots, which is kind of what was mentioned to me. Ariel, do you want to speak first, or do you want to... I'll go ahead and give you...
Do you swear everybody in for this, or...
We don't swear in, because it's legislative.
Okay.
But there's the names.
All right. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight, taking your time out, and taking a look at all this stuff. So, I appreciate y'all. I think the biggest thing is the piece of land, and I don't know where the picture is. You can kind of...
Excuse me. Can you please state your name and how you relate to this development?
I'm disagreeing, yeah. And I'll be the developer, or trying to put this package together and develop it.
Thank you.
So, yeah. What we've got is 17 lots right now that are... Thank you, that works out. Essentially, you can't do anything with it, right? There's a packet, you'll see it. We've done all the soil stuff. We're trying to do a regular neighborhood. It'd be about the same number of lots. But because the prior development of the mobile manufactured homes that were on it, there's nowhere to put any septic fields, there's nowhere to well all the stuff, so it doesn't work, right? We could get water, but the septic fields doesn't work. So that's where we ended up talking to the developer across the street at One Hut Springs, and worked out, hopefully, it's an easement to get to the sewer over there, so that we can get sewer to this property, which makes it a viable property as far as being able to get 17 lots. We've been working with Kevin at MSD to get that density, or get as many as we could. As you can see, there's a lot of real estate on the bottom down there, those two big lots. But we are just capped off on what we can do to get pump up into that system. So that we're just kind of where we at, or what we can do with it to meet the zoning that we're doing. Our goal is to have single-family housing lots in there. And so, I feel like we've been working pretty hard on trying to come up with a way that meets, I think, a very good design, and trying to accomplish a good fit, right? A fit with the neighborhood, with the single-family houses around it, and a fit in the area. Yeah. So anyhow, that's just kind of the project. Yeah, we appreciate it. I think the, you know, going back to the street trees inside the whole subdivision, one of the things I will tell you is that this is not like, there's not like masquerading going on. There's a lot of mature trees, and I don't know whether we've got a picture somewhere of all the mature trees on the site. So I think there's a lot of mature trees that are already in place on the site. You do have to fill it up on the front next to the road, but we're gonna... We've offered to put the street trees down the roadside, so that you'll have that kind of buffering the Old Marshall Highway. And then, there's pictures, like I said, all these lots that you see on the second row, those interior two rows are all, they've all got trees on them, pretty much. This is the first floor that don't really have much up on that side. And since we are able to get the septic, or the sewer and the water, we don't have to do a lot of septic clearing, so you're not doing massive clearing as well outside of that. So just a whole footprint is what we'll be working on. Yeah. Any other questions for me, and then I'll let Ariel come up?
I'm sure you're not gonna like to answer this question, but have you envisioned a price range for these houses?
So, that's where I go back. I don't really, until we get through the whole process, like the whole sewer, I haven't really gotten to all the costs, but I know that's gonna be expensive and all this stuff. And I don't know, I think just selling lots, I mean, I think this is probably a chance to sing, sell single-family lots to people that want to build houses, right? Inventory lots that we need.
Excuse me, any other questions? Okay.
All right. Do you need Ariel to come up? Do you need the... Anything?
Um, do you want to... Is there... Is there anything... What guidelines are there for... We talked about the types of homes that you expect to go in there, but are there any restrictions in terms of like minimum land size, or that someone can't come and further subdivide, further split these?
That'll be... That, I mean, they won't be able to because of sewer, right? So at the end of the day, the sewer's capped out. So this is what you will get, as far as that goes. As far as lot sizes, I mean, our house square footage or all that stuff, I mean, I don't know, probably 1,500 or something like that, or up, you know, just normal-sized houses. Yeah. Yeah. Good question. Anything else?
Well, I guess I would still like the street trees. Can they be worded, Ricky, that... I'm trying to find a way we could word it, that if there's existing trees, we don't take them down to put the street trees in, but we want to blend the street trees in? Is there any minimum requirements that we should say, X amount every so many feet, or...
Well, typically, you do one about our code, or a lot of the codes, you'll say one per every 40 feet of linear street front. So you would take, you know, 1,225 divided by 40. I think I come up with like 31, and that's on one side. And so if you're doing on the other side, too, you basically double it, so you'd be looking at somewhere like 62, 63 trees. If you're doing one over 40 feet each side. Unless you was to alternate that.
Stagger them?
Stagger them, then 40 feet, and go 40 feet and do it on the other side, but still, you're still looking at... That would be like 80 feet on the opposite side, or on the same side. But with putting a road, putting all that sewer in that area, and probably getting in there, more than likely, any existing trees, you're gonna probably destroy a critical root zone on any trees that are in any close proximity to that road bed.
Okay.
So they're probably not gonna survive in any regards. And with the size of lots, again, we're talking about like 10, 12,000 square feet, you're talking about quarter acre, and those are pretty tight. So if you have any tree of any size, with all those different lives coming back, you're probably gonna wind up losing a lot of the tree camp, just because of the nature of construction and people wanting to, you know, replant. Now, that said, lots 16 and 17 on the back, the back 40 here, the western lots, those are so big that there could be some trees reserved as part of that. It'd be a hard one to police for me and Marie, just for the simple fact that they're on private property, and we would be hard-pressed to keep up if you were reserving, you know, three-quarters of an acre of tree preservation area on a private piece of property. That would have to be in a common element. There would be no way that I could police on Lot 17, tree removal or tree preservation in an area that's just a one-off, you know? So I wouldn't want to do that. But yes, sometimes you can, if you have mature trees, you can save them. There might be opportunity, depending on what they do along Old Marshall Highway, some of those trees might be able to be saved. We would encourage credit, because I'd rather somebody save a 10-inch tree, or 8-inch tree over, you know, cutting it down and replanting it 2-inch. As far as lot sizes or further subdivision for Mr. Deron, the plan is the plan, so there might be a little bit of wiggling, waggling on lots as this layout, but we wouldn't allow an 18th lot. We wouldn't allow they to be recombined and made duplexes. Like, it would be pretty much in essence this CZ, and everybody would...
Single-family.
It'd be single-family, so we wouldn't let anything really much change on this, besides what you got, it's what you got.
And Road A is gonna be completely new?
That's a completely new road.
So that will be new construction excavation through there?
Yes.
It's not existing?
Correct.
And let me see if I can find in the board packet how I can bring that... I think for my comments to the board here, I would like to see some type of street trees, because I agree that once we start excavating through here, it's gonna wipe out what's there. I don't have a problem with the staggered, or do we... What's everybody's opinion on that? Do we want 30 on each side, or we... Can we stagger them and spread them out? Do we have any preferences? Yeah, I think stagger, you know, having trees along that road, especially in the areas where there's gonna be a lot that it's open space to begin with in upper. The lower side has a lot of tree, you know, there's vegetation all along. You're going through a forest practically on a lower piece of the Road A, and you almost wouldn't need to go in and replant stuff. Like Ricky said, you know, if they can save eight to 10 to 20-inch trees, and not have to put in 2-inch.
And there's the grading plan online for you. I'm sorry, Ms...
No, I was just gonna say, number 10 in the project conditions addresses the trees. Are you suggesting then that that be rewritten?
Wait a second. Where are you looking at?
There's project conditions, Exhibit D, that were all, according to the thing Ricky sent us, have already been agreed to, right, Ricky? The D?
Yeah, they've agreed to street trees on Old Marshall Highway. They've agreed to Old Marshall Highway, so that...
Not, not Road A.
Okay, okay. Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe we can put something there that we would like to have, the street trees on Road A, but they can get credit for if there are existing trees there, that they can be saved with working with the township?
Yeah. Now, we'll have to make sure the developers are agreeable to that condition, and if you want to specify, if street trees is every 40 feet, do you want to provide additional flexibility of every 50, 55 feet, or, you know, if you say street trees, I'm gonna go with interpreting that as being one tree over 40 feet on each side of the street.
But I thought...
Yeah.
Your point about in lieu of, you know, existing trees can be credit toward that number, yeah?
And we would allow that. In practice, we allow that. So if somebody builds a brand-new, for screening yards and street trees, we'll allow. We actually encourage saving the trees, because you get more bang for your buck with existing vegetation. But, so yeah, you can see that the road does do some grading. It's not a complete, full-on grade, this pads, the sites for the subdivision development, but we just know that there'll be development occurring on each individual house lot, so...
I personally like the creative use of the space, the design of this to go and fit 17 good-sized lots on, you know, fitting with the topography of that hill. And then it gives unique, you know, there's lots that are... They're not all rectangles. There's... Everyone's got a unique shape to it, with a curve around a bend, or wherever it might be. So I think people are gonna find that as an attractive piece to this property overall.
So is there somebody from the project that can speak then to our question with the street trees?
So...
Yeah. Oh, wait. We should have...
I know what the initial response was, but I mean... So there's two things I think we would like to see, is are the street trees number one, and along Marshall Highway is a sidewalk along Marshall Highway. I think that's something that we would like to, as in down the street.
I would be happy to give the easement to the sidewalk on Old Marshall Highway, right? Give the easement to the land, and then do the trees on the Old Marshall Highway side. I, the numbers on the project are really pretty tight right now already, and so a sidewalk is a large cost item. So I'd, I'm, I'd have to go back and I haven't run any numbers of, of the cost of it, but I know that's not inexpensive, right? So I'd have to go back and look at that, just being honest, I don't have that figured out yet or factored. I didn't factor that. As far as the trees goes, I'm happy to work with it. I'd like some detail about, you know, how far off the street the tree is that we're saving or all the stuff. You know, I would go back and say, you know, the good news is we're really not grading a ton here because it is pretty flat up on the top piece and the back piece it is wooded, there is a lot of trees, right? So I love saving the trees and doing what we can for the trees, so, you know, if we want to put in there, you know, and I like your idea about alternating it too, so they're not the same all the way through. If you want to alternate maybe every other, every other side gets a forty foot tree down through there and we'll make sure we work that into the deal to make sure we take care of the trees, right? Like I agree with you on that, like it's, it's a fine thing.
And, and working with the town, if there's trees that are close enough, get credits for that, but if it happens in the backyard, then that's gonna kind of.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah. Yeah, and I think I like it, I appreciate you recognizing the creativity of the subdivision of lots and stuff like that. I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to have a lot of the vegetation that's still there and the trees and all the poor stuff. It's not, these are pretty decent sized lots, right? And we're not trying to come in and do, you know, complete lot to lot line grading here. This is trying to keep as much as possible.
I think we as a board and a town appreciate that, and I think like Chris said, it is actually a very nice layout. It's not just a straight road and houses everywhere.
That's right.
So that's much, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I, I want to comment on the sidewalk. I think in general, as we start to, to watch our neighborhoods, you know, appear and develop that, you know, think about the families and the kids and everyone who are living in here and, and having to go deal, you know, that'll become a road that's more and more traveled. And so having sidewalk, you know, today we're so short, there's, they're not anywhere, you know? And people, so we're sitting here trying to get the greenway built and things like that. So I think it's, it's helpful to the area to have space along the road.
And I think we got the space there, right? The space is there, everything's kind of ready to go, so that if it did later, you could easily put it in later.
Yeah, so that, and that's up along the flats.
Yeah, we've agreed to that, yeah.
So it's just an easement for the sidewalk? It's not an, you're not gonna actually be putting in a sidewalk? Because there's no other sidewalk on that road, so it didn't make any sense to me to have it there.
We're happy, we got the easement, we, we agree with you. I think as things, you know, we're really struggling, you see that all over Bunkin County right now where people are now walking, you know, I just want to know, my kids go to ACA and it's want to know and it's incredible, the highway seventy, the traffic, the people walking on it and stuff, right? So the easement is there, the easement is granted to you guys to do it and it's pretty flat and level, ready to go, so, yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas? So is the board okay then without the sidewalk? Just, the easement's, the easement's gonna be a given, I think that's a given, and they do not, there are no curb cuts. What did you call it Ricky?
I called it a negative access easement.
Yeah, that, I think that's a great idea because we don't want to have any more driveways going out into that road to start with.
Just thinking about the sidewalk and thinking about, you know, your last comment, could be done somewhere down the road by someone. So I wonder if there would be a way to have a stipulation that if there is a movement from the town to add sidewalks in, that that would be something funded by the homeowners' association that they might start putting money toward, thinking that it's going to be years down the road or is there anything that?
The state be the ones putting a sidewalk?
I don't think you could impose that on an HLA.
It's just, it's, it's that and the fact that, you know, once these things get developed, there's, it's, it's with a CZ, it's, you know, there, there could be charter amounts got a different standard, you got twenty different, thirty different, and probably it'll be here fifty years from now to keep up whenever they might do it. Might be alive Scott, I might be alive hopefully. But, but yeah, I, I'm with Glenda, I'm not really sure we could have put that as tag because we don't know when and if that time would be.
That was my guess, I was just trying to come up with something that, then it's, so that it's not just a someone someday.
What is Old Marshall, is that a township road or is it a state?
It's a state road, so it's state.
Yeah, and it's a pretty busy road. I mean, so I'm not quite sure what a, a small segment of sidewalk is gonna do for you.
Well, you have to start somewhere. What I was saying was if it was a movement to have a sidewalk along all of it.
It occurs to me, you know, we're gonna talk about the comprehensive plan, but somebody ought to really design where we should be putting sidewalks all over the town and then maybe we'd have the answer to this question.
I, I, I put a comment in on that one for you Glenda.
It's so expensive, I know.
The only other option, and again, I'm gonna throw out, I'm spending somebody else's money here, so I'll, but he hasn't agreed, he's like, sometimes people will pay, but we don't have a sidewalk fund, but yeah, but could potentially offer maybe a smaller fee in lieu instead of constructing a full sidewalk here, they could potentially contribute voluntarily. But I'm, I'm just suggesting that we don't have a fund yet set up for those. So that's usually, you have to be careful with those funds and creating ones because you want to make sure you spend that money in a very close proximity where you're taking funds in. We wouldn't want to take it and spend it on the other end of town or in a park. It'd be useful, maybe do a connectivity or in this area or maybe ADA improvements in the future, the intersection, but that's a, that's a wild one to throw out there, but we'll eventually try to develop ordinances up our sophistication by handling that, but.
I think you made a good point Glenda, that the comprehensive plan overall, like they put an easement here that allows for it to be then figured out.
Well, and then if we, somebody comes before us, we know that that's an area that needs sidewalks, but I, I do think this road and one small piece of it, I don't quite know where they would go with their sidewalk.
Well, we seem to be a little bit split in the sidewalk, so I guess the sidewalk part will back off of, and we'll, I would like to stand firm with the tree part though.
Is, within the neighborhood actually, are there sidewalks among the, no, nothing inside? Because to me, that's where it would be more, of more value than the, than the road.
Especially with the, the developments, so like I have Riverwalk, with the narrow streets, it's really tough to walk or ride a bicycle on a street because they're narrow to start with and sidewalks would be great, but they're not proposed at all on this, so.
Well, and they aren't, and most of the things coming before us, because nobody wants to spend the money on it, but.
To put that in our ordinances.
It, it's something that Marie and I have talked extensively in the past two or three weeks. This project has brought a lot of that conversation up about like what Glenda just mentioned.
Yep. Any more questions, thoughts, concerns?
So before we move on and start doing a suggestive motion, so on those trees, our ownership, I understand, so I can type this up here with council, so are we saying along Road A internal to the site, we're looking at doing a street tree ever forty feet alternating sides? So on the left side of the road, we'd go, we put one forty feet, we'd go forty feet, add one to the right side, go another forty feet and then back on the left. So that would be like eighty, every eighty feet on each side of the street, on each individual side, but it would be, you'd have one forty feet, across the road forty feet, forty feet.
All right, is everybody good with that?
Is that, is that what you're suggesting? I'll make sure, or you're thinking forty feet every forty?
Well, that's why I, originally I thought it was forty foot staggered, but it's still be every forty feet, but you're talking every eighty feet.
I want to make, because I want to make sure we said alternate and we'll make sure, because it could be.
So I guess the question for the board is, do we want them forty foot staggered, so every forty feet on each side gets it, or do we want it eighty foot staggered? Because I think we like, I think staggered seems to be preferred method either way.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it's, it's their choice, I'm not gonna dictate because the driveway's in lots and anything like that, but if we say ever forty feet, I'm gonna apply it as, we go down the right side, forty feet, put a tree, forty feet, put a tree, left side, forty feet, put a tree, forty feet, put a tree. That's how I'm gonna apply it. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
What's the average lot width?
Uh, they're at least seventy feet wide.
So if we went with staggered every, what I'll call every eighty feet, right, that's, every, every house almost gets a, a tree then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
And, and based on my calculation, what I had twelve hundred feet, I'd come up with about thirty-one trees if you done on forty feet on one side, so it'd be about thirty-one trees. If you done one every eighty feet alternated, it'd still be about thirty-one trees.
We don't need to overkill them, and like they said, there's gonna be trees on the properties anyway, so I think we're good with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure I get that.
So we're gonna just put staggered street trees on Road A if we make a, a motion, but behind the scenes, you know the technical answer for that?
And is there any, and again, about the barrier only about how close to the street you want them, typically it's about within twenty, twenty-five feet of the edge of pavement is good?
I'm gonna defer that to a tree person.
Okay. Okay, we can, we can, if we say twenty.
No, you can't get them there, well, there would be underground.
We can say twenty-five feet, edge of pavement, and that way if there's a tree that's existing, we go, okay. I, I just thought to you, but just to make sure we get it right. And then I want to ask the applicant here, develop, Ariel, does that seem doable, like getting credit or placing a street tree within twenty-five feet of the edge of pavement? Would that allow enough flexibility for you?
Yeah, I think that sounds.
It could might be, it could be possibly outside the right of way and on the lot, and then that way you don't get to deal with it. And then you're doing forty feet and then skip to the other side of the street going, so you might have about thirty-one, thirty-two trees in the development, is that the same?
Yeah, I think the area that has the most potential for including existing trees is the lower segment, the bottom of the U shape, so if that area is heavily treated, we just want to make sure not, we're able to take them with the range, to be able to use in that area as well, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and I'll refine that condition and I'll make sure to pass it on to you Ariel
so you can hand on to Wesley. And typically a street tree is large maturing type tree, like oat, maple, whatever, encouraging variety, native western North Carolina, it's two inch caliper, you know, twelve, fourteen foot tall, usually we say two inch caliper, usually get a pretty decent sized tree if it's large maturity.
Rather for pears?
No. They're not yet, South Carolina put all the basic clips in it. I've got a fair one in my house, it's got thorns. But yeah, there's plenty, like Shannon says, there's a lot of trees to pick from in west, southeast, the mountains, you get a lot of pretty trees. So with that, I'll, let me get back to, out of this slideshow on that, and we can move to the suggested motion and so.
So somebody would like to make a motion, we have a suggestion motion and we would have one condition, which would be the street tree condition, I believe, oh, two conditions. First one would be the street tree condition and the second one would be the easement for the sidewalk, and I guess the third one would be the non.
I included the easement for the sidewalk in, in.
Into the other, to the non-building, the non.
Into the exhibit D, it should be in there.
Okay.
I can double check really fast. Glenda, Glenda had read through all that, I think, in real, real detail.
It's fifteen.
Fifteen.
We're gonna see this on our tablets when I get our tablets.
Yeah.
Just gotta keep pushing Ricky.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So we'll, I'll need to update, I'll update this standard here before it goes to the board, town council, there's modification, and then I've got down here under fifteen, a twenty foot or irrevocable easement.
Okay.
For the future, I just said multimodal improvement, just in case it's a sidewalk or for some reason in the future, Glenn, like you mentioned, it turns into a side path, something, almost like a greenway or something, that's a little bit more flexible.
So item fifteen.
Flying cars?
Maybe, yes.
So item fifteen will include that easement and all, as well as the non?
So the only.
Curb cut.
Yeah, and I've got the negative access easement there too.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got that in there too, so I think.
So we don't have to have them as conditions?
No, I had already, they agreed to those already, we had, Ariel and I had worked on that, and so we, we had several conditions. And they had seen this, they've already seen this exhibit D, so the only thing I understand that we're adding is the street trees.
That was number fifteen, ten, right?
Ten, but I say not on, not apply the new eternal street.
Okay.
So we're basically modifying number ten to include street trees, and I can, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do we have a brave person that would like to try this?
A quick technical question, so would it be worded every forty feet on alternating sides of the street or would it be every eighty feet on alternates?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying for, like, yeah.
I think it would be every forty feet with the, and we could say with the approximate number of thirty-one.
Yeah.
Which then helps to.
Yeah.
Then people realize it's not double that or half that.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's totally worth it, the every forty feet alternating sides.
Yeah, for approximate total of thirty-one.
Does that sound understandable to the project? We're not asking for eighty trees or sixty trees, so we're good.
Okay. I move to approve the, approve the conditional zoning of ten point one eight acres as shown on exhibits A and B from R twenty-one residential district to R ten residential district conditional zone, subject to the conditions identified in the exhibit D project conditions and subject to the following additional condition. There shall be street trees on Road A every forty feet on alternating sides of the street with the approximate total number of thirty-one trees added. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the town of Woodfinn comprehensive plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request promotes economic development by providing compatible infill development of undeveloped properties within the town that reduces infrastructure cost while allowing open space to be preserved, provides a range of housing types and prices and ensures a quality, high quality building stock and protects flood plains, steep slopes, wetlands, wildlife habitat and other environmentally valuable and sensitive areas.
That's from the draft comp plan, just third one in there.
I'll second.
Can you back to the first slide so she can?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, so, Mr. Hanson, yes, Ms. Gosnell, yes, Mr. Deronee.
Yes.
Ms. Overboard, right, Over, sorry, apologies.
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. So it is approved unanimously.
Okay.
Congratulations.
So let me change gears here and get, so the, the lead consultants, Nate Baker and Christie Carter weren't able to make tonight's meeting, but we have their esteemed, very, yeah, esteemed associate Teresa, who I just got to meet this evening, so let me get.
I appreciate Teresa.
All right, Teresa, I'll, I'll let you.
Thanks Ricky. Thanks. Okay, I am not Nate Baker and I'm not Christie Carter, I'm Teresa Buckwalter, as Ricky said, and I work for transportation planning and design with Christie and Nate has been the lead on this. I'm gonna go through the comprehensive plan, just, it's about a twenty minute for, of me talking and then some questions and answers, and I'm gonna probably turn this way and when you have questions, because I've been more kind of behind the scenes and less involved of course than Christie and Nate. But it's Woodfinn together comprehensive plan, and our agenda is to kind of give you an overview of that, the comprehensive planning itself, to talk about the chapters real briefly and talk about next steps. So briefly, what is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan attempts to answer three questions. Where are we now? And so that's an analysis of the trends and the conditions of your community. Where are we going? So that's the community's vision and goals. And then how do we get there? And that's the policies and the implementations and actions. So this project had four phases, has four phases. Phase one was the research and analysis phase. Phase two was the planned vision and goals. Phase three is the draft plan, and we are right here between phase three and phase four, phase four being the finalization of the plan. And throughout those last three phases, community engagement was a part of that. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more. There are, to make a project like this, your comprehensive plan successful, really six groups come together, key groups, and that is the steering committee, which was very involved in this project. That's just a group of Woodfinn residents dedicated to guiding the comprehensive planning process. Stakeholders, and these are folks that we reached out to who have a particular expertise in targeted areas. The general public, and so that's, folks, that's really where the, the vision comes from, is, is people who live here, and they kind of set that plan's direction. The town officials such as yourself, so I'm happy to be here with you all, and the planning board, but also town council, their role of course is to participate, to champion the project, the document, to adopt it and then oversee the implementation. The town staff of course is really very much involved, providing coordination in the planning process, and then the consultant team. And so the consultant team providing planning expertise. So we know that before this consultant team came on, there was a previous consultant team, so there was. this consultant team came on, there was a previous consultant team. So there was, we wanted to honor the, that community engagement that already took place. And so we call that round one of that community engagement. And so we didn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So there was like a lot of synthesis and analysis and incorporation of that community input, because those folks showed up to those meetings at that time and we wanted to make sure that that got into part of this plan. So there's a lot of that. And then the listening and learning phase of this comprehensive plan was really kind of supplemented, supplemented targeted engagement for those under-reached groups. And so some of those stakeholders were, you know, of course, the town stakeholders, town staff, town council, planning board, board of adjustment, parks and greenways advisory commission. But the community stakeholders were involved in several different. And I won't necessarily list all those, but including affordable housing to Poder Emma, to education partners and human services. So a number of stakeholders were also part of the input on this document.
What's Poder Emma? You don't mind me asking?
It's a, it's a community development group that, that reaches out to the Emma community and that's mostly Spanish-speaking, but not exclusively. So the...
Specifically from Woodfinn or that's, I've never heard it either.
They're over near Irwin, aren't they?
Poder Emma, they're asking about.
They're, they're based out of the Emma community, which is just south of the Crest Mountains, south of, of Gorman Bridge. And so they're kind of in that island of Asheville south and of them and east of them, and Woodfinn's north and west of them. So they're kind of an island. It's a county area. And this is, again, it sounds like a nonprofit and they've done work in the Hispanic community, but they also have done work with like this kind of cooperative model of manufactured housing where instead of you live in a mobile home park and you're paying to a landlord, they're working on doing something where it's like almost like a townhome condo setup where the residents own the land together jointly and they, so the payments they make are to pay for that land and for the maintenance part. So it's not a, it's more like a cooperative. You see, that's co-op model housing. It's the same thing. They've just put, usually in a model sense of a mobile homes. So people are reinvesting, keeping the money as opposed to rental income being pulled out to some other investor. So it kind of keeps things more permanently affordable. And you don't, my understanding from them is that if you live, you can only like be an ownership if you live there. Like, so if you move out, then technically I think you have to sell. But I, that's all their model. But it's a real interesting model.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah. So round two of the community engagement included, was in the springtime and included two workshops. It included, we were, we had a presence at the Woodfinn five K and then food drives. And so throughout this, we would share the draft vision framework and engage folks in terms of what do you think, what are the, the big ideas you have for the future of Woodfinn? And so, you know, this person kind of captured, this picture captures a vision of that. And then we did exit questionnaires at these workshops and where we asked essentially two questions. Were you comfortable completing the meeting activities? And a hundred percent of the folks said, said yes. And then did you feel like your input was heard and recorded accurately? And so these are just meaningful things to us that we, we've been, were really hearing folks at those round two of Engate Community Engagement. And at a food drive as well, where we had similar questions, but in Spanish. We want to make sure that everyone can feel like they're part of this and, and are being heard. And so from the community engagement of round one and the community engagement of round two, some themes emerged from both of those. And so these common themes are represented here. There are four kind of the larger common themes of sort of cost of living, the French Broad River and our relationship with the French Broad River, environmental protection, and quality of place. We're kind of the four large ideas that really kind of emerged out of all of those interactions with the community. But there are other supporting themes as well, like maintaining that small-town feel, expanding safe transportation options, providing high-quality services. So we kind of took all that. And then that really very much informed the plan document that I believe you all have had a copy of. And so that informed the, the vision. And so I want to talk about kind of the vision framework. That's these three components of the vision at the top. What is an ideal future for Woodfinn? It reflects the community's values and principles. What are the goals? So what needs to be achieved? And that, this part includes more specific objectives. And then those policies and actions. So how will the town achieve that? And so examples, which you all know this, but I'm just gonna share some examples here. A goal for the future outcome is, for example, a strong diversified economy, thriving manufacturing, connected food economy, or excellent public services and facilities. But a policy is a practice for achieving certain goals. So support Woodfinn's independent businesses, for example. Encourage growth on the small-scale artisans as another example of policy. And then an action proactively taken by the town. And that's like adopting the stormwater best practices, updating the zoning regulations to align with the activity center's vision. So this vision framework really informed the plan chapters, right? So we want to take these five key things that were the vision framework, a livable pattern, a sustainable town, a transportation options, great government, and then opportunities to thrive. So those really have informed these plan chapters, which have the same titles. So I'm gonna touch on each of these really briefly. This is not gonna be the content of these chapters, but sort of a reminder, and we can talk about this. Chapter one, a livable built pattern. Chapter one included Woodfinn's planning principles, the conceptual growth framework map, which informed the future land use map, the opportunities map, utility service and annexation criteria, and the two key goals being Woodfinn's built environment will be sustainable and equitable. And Woodfinn, the second one, Woodfinn will seek to remain an affordable place to live and work. So this chapter also identifies those ten principles. And I'm not gonna read through all of these, but basically talks about the activity centers, the connections and the transportation options, connections between key things in the community, civic spaces, promoting infill versus development of, you know, green spaces on the edges, protecting communities from economic displacement. And so that conceptual growth framework, really, that's the one on the left, really is sort of the big picture, right? So the big picture of how do we take those ten things that we just talked about and almost visually show those on your, in your community? And so that is the activity centers shown in purple. And then the blue kind of hexagon is the employment centers, kind of showing those corridors. And then the yellow being the mixed residential, the green on the edges being more rural or conservation. So this really informed the town, got really much more specific with the future land use map. So that's the one on the right. And a reminder that that's not a zoning map. That's, these are the descriptions of the different types of land uses being proposed. And so the document also goes through each of those types. We're showing the description of that or explaining the description of that and showing images, examples, like very good examples of what do we mean when we say commercial? What do we mean when we say walkable mixed use? And so it lists kind of the opportunities there and the desired characteristics of each of those. So that's chapter one. Chapter two really is about transportation options, right? And so with three main goals. Greenways that are not just recreational amenities, but they're key transportation connectors for the community. Woodfinn's amenities are accessible on foot and by bicycle. And three, a reliable bus system that people can use to commute and make trips to Asheville and Weaverville. And one thing you all were talking about with the previous group was the bicycle and pedestrian. And you all are kind of poised for that as a next sort of planning effort. So congrats. And then chapter two also shows, you know, when we're talking about these two before and after pictures, kind of we're talking about walkable places. The upper of both of those images and then the lower image showing these high-visibility crosswalks, ways that we can make these connections for people on foot, by bicycle, et cetera. So that was chapter two. Chapter three really lays out four key goals, and that is the opportunities to thrive. So jobs are accessible locally and residents have opportunities to both live, work, and work in Woodfinn. A thriving, modern local economy that offers a variety of job opportunities. An equitable and inclusive local economy for all residents. And a town that provides educational excellence for everybody. Chapter four has four goals as well. And that is Woodfinn residents receive high-quality public services and facilities that promote health, safety, and well-being of all community members. Woodfinn residents have access to excellent parks, recreation, community facilities. Woodfinn will be an active participant in regional planning, policymaking. Woodfinn is a place where residents have opportunities to engage on community issues. And then the fifth chapter is sustainable town. So we've got three goals, key goals here. A town with plentiful green spaces connected together and interwoven with green corridors. A clean watershed that enhances sustainability and resiliency through natural stormwater approaches. And finally, Woodfinn is an energy-efficient city with green transportation and energy options. So again, this is your comprehensive plan, which is aspirational. We're looking into the twenty-fourty horizon. And so the plan is those chapters plus there'll be an appendix with really clear action items as well. And so the next steps are currently happening right now is an online input. So folks can go online, review the draft plan and give their input. I think Nate said a couple weeks.
From, from now or from when it opened?
A couple weeks from now. Yeah. Planning board is tonight. And town council, November twenty-first, there'll be a discussion of the draft, potentially another meeting to discuss and adopt the draft. And then, of course, finalizing and transmitting the plan. We're looking at a December-January timeframe for that. And I just posed some questions here, but you all do not have to answer these questions. You can answer the questions that may be rolling around in your brain. And I'm gonna be turning this way and looking for this to be more of a discussion. So this is your opportunity. This isn't your only opportunity, but would love to hear from you all.
I like it.
Okay, great. What are the best parts, would you say, of the plan?
I like the flexibility that we're keeping in mind. I don't know whether it would be called green, you know, green accessibility of, or connectivity of the town throughout that you don't, you don't have to have a, a car to get everywhere, you know, because that's not sustainable from the green perspective. And it's, you know, more leisurely and, you know, an enjoyable place to live where there's, where there's sidewalks and other modes of transportation and things like that. That's kind of a theme throughout. So I like the themes overall.
Great. Y'all are being polite to each other. Just jump in here.
I, I actually have given feedback already, because I'm on the longer, or the comprehensive planning committee with Stephanie.
Okay, great.
You know, I, I really am fascinated by the maps. But I also, when I look at them, I see things that aren't completely accurate. And I don't know how we're gonna, I mean, I see residential areas that have commercial enterprises, you know, big time in some of it. And it probably, that is the zoning residential. And you go, so how did all that happen? Why do we have commercial in the middle of residential? And just stuff like, it raises questions to me as much as anything. I also thought, I said, could they please make the colors a little more different in the map? Because you get there and you go, okay, commercial and industrial, you know, those, those browns and reds or whatever are pretty similar.
Well, so I have a question about what you're bringing up, because I, I had a similar kind of thought. But maybe you can answer it. From the, the perspective of the comprehensive plan, would you more or less say, forget about what's there? This is the vision and what should be there? And then start to see how it aligns? Like if, if the plan is to have this area be residential and it's all commercial, then wouldn't we just rezone it to be what the, what it should be?
Evolve, it'll evolve into that as, as time goes.
My plan is to drag Ricky out to the site. I want it to be a park. It's a beautiful, but it's an RV, you know, it's a commercially-run RV park, which is, it's perfect for a real park. But, and it's in the middle of the residential, you know what I'm talking about, right? Okay. No, I think, I think it's gonna be really helpful. I said to the group when we had our last meeting, that I thought to some extent, though, we have to be proactive instead of reactive. And I don't know how we do that, but it might mean changing the way we run this board. I mean, we were talking about sidewalks. I don't know where we get the expertise and where they should go. But, you know, there are things like that that really could make decisions here a lot more easy. And we'd be moving in the right direction.
I think you all are poised for a DOT bicycle and pedestrian plan coming up.
What did you just say?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay. The depart, I don't know all the details, but I do know that the Department of Transportation works with communities and funds bicycle and pedestrian plans.
Oh, yeah?
So, yeah. So that is a future.
We need funders, that's for sure.
This would lay the, lay the groundwork for that, right? To, to say, okay, here, we've got a comprehensive plan to expand our use of sidewalks and bike trails. Let's go take action on it.
That's right.
If this, if this doesn't facilitate where we, where we want to be, like this should be what we strive to be, right?
Well, and I think I remember that a statement was made in one of our meetings of the other group, that, that they thought our residential category should be merged and that we shouldn't have so many, which are four now, right, Ricky? Four. And I don't know, I don't know how easy that would be to do, instead of, you know, people having to come in for conditional zoning to change, you know, stuff like that maybe could be, could be done. I don't...
Yeah.
But I, Glenda, I really like your idea also of being proactive, not reactive. And thinking, and I don't know how to do this.
I know.
But thinking about the future and what's likely on the horizon that we're now just starting to see, you know, as, as a world, as a, in technology and whatever, and how are we incorporating that into our plans?
See, I, I think we've got to find developers who really want to do affordable housing and find places that some, maybe the town already owns some land that they could, I mean, we've got, if we really believe, because there's not gonna be a developer who comes in front of us that isn't gonna want to make a hefty return on their investment. And you can't blame them. I'm not saying, but...
I'm also thinking people movers.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's great to have sidewalks for those who can walk on their own or spaces for self locomotion of some kind. But what about the folks that really don't have that option? Or, you know, given the grade of hills and things and wanting to get downtown more quickly than taking a leisurely two-hour stroll?
I know Ken Khan isn't on this group. Maybe he's been elected to town council. But he really believes that we might need to hire some private transportation groups to move, to make transportation really work for this area. You know, I certainly don't know anything about that. But that, you know, especially if the fairs paid for the business, you know, because I don't know...
Trolley, get on there. Start riding that. Take it from over there to down, from that park to that park. But that's, you know, that's a good point. There's, and if we, if we leave the, this open to, try to, basically try and drive toward those type of concepts. You wouldn't necessarily know what it is going to be. But if it says, we want to have, you know, transportation, and, and that seems to be kind of in here, right? So that's funny to say that. I mean, thinking of what, you know, what's on the horizon, I mean, should, as, as we're looking at putting in, you know, new parks or, you know, like the park that's going in by the river, and they're gonna have a parking lot there, you know, should there be electric? be electric, you know, should there be plugs for people's electric cars, you know, when there's not gas cars left anymore? Put in, you know, some charging spots, you know?
I think some people have even wondered if Craigie Railroad could run all the way down the track to downtown.
Right, right. It goes there, yeah. But I think that some of those themes seem to be in here, so I think that's a good thing about it, is that those, as long as the categories are there and that says, okay, we like transportation and greenness and, you know, affordable housing and affordable to live in Woodfin, then we've got themes.
I just, for me personally, I just think that's our, the biggest challenge, not just for Woodfin, but everywhere. I mean, if we don't solve that to some extent, my God, what a divided society we're going to be.
Which is another reason to have the zoning maps eventually move to the comprehensive plan. So build the plan, how it should be in the future, and then we start to get the zoning to match with it, and that, if that means, you know, high density, low, you know, good affordability, mixed in with residential, you know, bigger plot lands and things like that.
Do we need separate categories of residential zoning to still, to have, you know, more density in? I don't know if we do. I mean, we have it now, but...
The only thing I would say about the categories I had mentioned to Nate was just, instead of like residential one or two, to align it to either like, you know, either low-density or town or valley or something, and then the other something else, just something to just kind of give you a little bit of visually kind of connect with, because I don't know, one and two are, I might, you might consider, I think two is more intense, just like lighter or heavy industrial versus the industrial one, industrial two. So I just asked for that, but...
More descriptive.
This is more descriptive in that.
Right. Well, and the CZ seemed to be a way to add some of that flexibility where, you know, maybe it's called this or it's called this, but if you put something CZ, then you can, it can flex either way. And sure, you do end up having more things have to come in front of a board for an approval for that, but that way, if you end up drawing it this way and saying it's, it's one or the other, but you've got no gray area, then, then you've limited yourself and you've segregated it more. But that way, the CZ approach is one that helps foster more integration and flexibility, you know?
I was actually really amazed at how flat that land was, that they, oh, God, look at that.
You don't see that often.
I know. I was thinking, how did that stay, make it so long? Of course, I guess it did have a mobile home park or something on it, but...
Perfect spot for a little neighborhood.
And I think your, your point about it as being an aspirational document, this is, we're looking at a horizon of 2040, and I think that showing those different residential land use types than this being aspirational, you're essentially saying to developers, we're looking for a mix of housing types, right? So we're not looking for one housing type. We're looking for a mix here of people, different economic stratospheres.
Well, over time, there's probably going to be more developers who position themselves to do affordable housing because it's in such demand, but I don't know how many have surfaced. Do you know Stephanie is a Realtor?
It's just hard to keep, it starts with the cost of the land.
Yeah, that's true. That's why if we could donate the land to, maybe...
If you can't find affordable land, you're already starting off with, like, this price in mind, and then you run into all kinds of issues while you're building, and then this price keeps going up. But there's a lot of people that claim to be offering affordable housing.
And they're not.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Unless it's a 1960 trailer.
I thought cutting the lot inside, that maybe we'd get a number that was at least not horrible, but they wouldn't tell me what they're thinking.
Oh, they wouldn't?
No, I asked the guy, they always ducked the question. They always do.
Too much.
A lot is probably what they're going to be charging, eighty, for that development?
The one we had earlier?
Yeah, probably eighty thousand.
So if you all have thoughts about other actions that need to be taken to implement the plan?
When, exactly with this action phase, what, who's producing that and what's it coming from?
The, so in the finalize, finalizing the document phase four, that appendix is going to include action items.
Right.
Yeah.
And is that basically, I think we were given an opportunity to have some input at the last meeting, although I don't, I don't remember for sure. So is it really coming from the staff that have looked at all this and they, okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And the part that's still, if you go back one slide, but...
Sure.
Yeah, so the, the public review draft, or, so people are still able to put input in?
Yep. Yep. Yeah. Well, thank you all so much for your thoughts. Thank you for serving us.
Thank you.
Yeah, like Smith mentioned, it was looking at a November 21st Town Council, but I think they've kind of tapped the brakes a little bit, so it's going to extend out that public input, which is not really, I think, a bad thing to have more input over the next couple of months, especially with new council coming in December.
Yeah, when does, when does the new council take it?
I believe, was it, they get sworn in December meeting, is that correct? Yeah, so there'll be, the existing council seated would meet in, at the November meeting, and then they'll get sworn in the new members on December meeting.
So there's nothing you need from us to do tonight? There's, we don't need recommendations, approvals, you know? We're just, we're here to listen in and hear it.
I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think, Marah, do they need to vote the recommend approval, just so we go to Town Council?
It's not finalized.
Yeah, I think...
It's not finalized, still draft form.
Draft form, yeah.
Coming in.
Yeah, you can just, yeah, we can always bring it back when we get to that point.
Be nice for us to review it and give our yay or nay, like the month before they ready, so if they're not going to do it in November, if they're...
No, they're not going to, yeah, my understanding is they're not going, they'll just go forward and hear this same presentation.
This might go into our, you know, January meeting or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, even the same month, because we're, our meeting's before their meeting.
Yeah, it is.
Probably that's to get the final, as final as we can get before we review it, I guess.
So you want to just table it or...
Table it for...
How do you want to say that, so that we don't have to have to ask?
Table it out.
Why don't we table our discussion of the draft until after the public review is closed? So, and like you said, Ricky, I think having that open, it's not, I think that's a good thing to let people still have input, since, especially since we're in the middle of transitioning the Town Council, just let it stay open, and then we wait to review the draft and do what.
I'm assuming council would like to hear from us as far as whether we approve or don't approve it.
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't the section really that relates to us, the land use, more than any of the others?
I mean, really, all of the transportation away, because that's sidewalks and multimodal and...
Sidewalks.
Yeah, so you mean, really, a lot of this document relates to this board and good governments, because the public participation you do is good governance.
One action could be create a plan, create a plan where sidewalks should be going forward.
Yeah, I got, I got one on my notes that says, make a priority pedestrian corridor map.
So if we're going to want this town lots of, could adopt...
Weaverville Road.
They could, but they already indicated they're not going to.
So my question, I think, is more that the draft doesn't seem to be an issue.
No, I think, I think...
They could adopt a draft.
They could.
I don't think, because I thought earlier that this is a draft.
It is a draft.
But I don't think the draft's...
Yeah, I think part of it is there's no implementation. I think everybody wants to see the implementation items, is what I understand.
That Nate and Chris are aware of.
Yeah, Nate and Kristi, yeah.
So, do you remember what Frank Golden said each time we let the appeal? How did you leave that? You didn't adjourn?
You recessed.
You recessed.
Yeah.
So we're not going to recess, we're just going to table, because you don't want to recess, like this would be...
Well, I don't think that this was, I don't think there was an open action item for us to sign off on it as a, as a completed draft or anything, ready to go to the Town Council. I think this was just a discussion of the current state of the draft.
Yeah, discussion of draft.
Do you want to adopt the agenda?
I think it does, yeah.
Yeah, adopt.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's adoption.
I looked at it earlier.
Yeah, so... Entire document by this point.
So what if we...
So we would be adopting what there is up to this point.
Yeah, so why don't we...
But there can still be changes or...
Yeah, so I think you want to probably table the...
I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion until we have a more complete draft.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Do you date certain...
Do you want, yeah, do you want to bring it up in the next, do we want to...
Are we meeting in December?
I don't know if we are or not at this point. I don't have any applications. Do you want to make it to the January meeting?
To the, to the next...
Yeah, yes.
Just say to the next time.
To the next scheduled meeting.
Sure. And then if Town Council's not ready then, we could just table again until the next one.
They're going to have the same kind of presentation, probably, right?
Yeah, they are. They're having the same presentation at their November meeting.
Do we need a second?
Chris, so, so we're, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Approves. So we're going to table this, item number two from tonight until next month.
To the next meeting.
And then we'll review this next month to see if we're...
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
I'm sorry, next meeting, I'm saying, next meeting. At that point in time, we'll review to see if we are ready to approve it, adopt it, because we may not be ready at that point, but we'll look at it, okay?
We'll further discuss.
Yeah, because I will, I probably won't schedule a December meeting if this is the only item. I'll probably try to let you have a month off if, yeah, just for this, but if we have any other items that we can bring back up. With that said, me and Marie is looking at the calendar, but we didn't want to wait last minute. So just look at your calendars for next 2024. The couple dates we've identified that went on the agenda was January 2nd, a Tuesday, is our first meeting of 2024, right after New Year's holiday. The other one I was thinking of was the April 2nd meeting, is that right? April 2nd, which is also spring break for Buncombe County that week. And then the other one was July 2nd, so Tuesday, it's also the week of the 4th. So we can leave those as our scheduled dates on the calendar if you want me and Marie to update to January 9th. We can publish the calendars January 9th, bring it for y'all, just make a special date so it's not right behind the New Year's holiday, or if, I know spring break this year was a little bit of an issue for planning board because a lot of people were out of town for spring break.
Just, do any of you have kids? You do, okay. And Ricky does, too.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that we, we don't have to make an immediate decision. We, if we want to, could we take a vote?
Yeah, we just think about it.
Think about it. Can you look at your calendars? But just be aware, we, when we made the calendar, we noticed, like, in the last week, wait a second, there's several holidays, and people try to take off, and not to interfere with y'all's vacations as well.
I didn't want to consider just going to the second Tuesday instead of the first one, if there's that many of them.
I mean, we'd just be those three, one, it could be one of those days or none of those days. I'm okay. The first Tuesday works good because we're about, if we need to get something, really put to Town Council, we have that, like, going to Town Council in two weeks, we can make that through the wire. Otherwise, the six weeks, like tonight's rezoning will go to the December meeting. We've got about six weeks, so let's just get a nice pace there. So no action on that, just throw that out there for you.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Do you want to vote?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have any other? Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Okay, you can motion the second.
My second.
Everybody in favor? All right, okay, meeting is now closed.
Thank you.